City Council for the city of Prairie View, Texas is now back in session from Executive Session. At six forty-three, Ms. Johnson, you serve out a form, please.
Councilwoman Rowland.
Present.
Councilwoman Randall.
Here.
Councilwoman Jones.
Here.
Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Councilwoman Wallace.
Here.
And we are coming from Executive Session regarding item number one, discuss and take action on approving the resolution for mayor's appointment of Denton Navarro, Rocha, Bernal, and Zech PC as city attorneys effective immediately. And what is council's pleasure?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Wallace.
I move that we approve the resolution for mayor's appointment of Denton Navarro, Rocha, Bernal, and Zech PC as city attorney effective immediately.
Certainly. It's been properly moved and seconded that item one, discuss and take action on approving the resolution for mayor's appointment of Denton Navarro, Rocha, Bernal, and Zech PC as city attorney effective immediately. Be approved. You've heard the motion. Ready for the questions?
Questions.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And let's do a roll call vote just to be sure. You can do that. Councilwoman Rowland?
Aye.
Councilwoman Randall?
Aye.
Councilwoman Jones?
Aye.
Councilwoman Williams?
Aye.
Councilman Wallace?
Aye.
Eyes have it. So, Ms. Zech, you can...
Thank you for the confidence, council. We really appreciate it. I look forward to working with all of you. Thank you.
Did we approve this? Did we approve the motion?
We approved the resolution.
Is something we need to correct?
Are you talking about the ones in the city?
They got it updated.
There should be a new one in front of you.
Yeah, we got that. Right, yeah. Item two, discuss and... Attorney Zech, I'll get with you on some things that council will issue.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Item two, discuss and take action to approve mayor's appointment of law officer Lee Van Richardson as municipal prosecutor effective immediately.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Randall.
I move that we approve the appointment of the law officer Lee Van Richardson as municipal prosecutor effective immediately.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that item two, discuss and take action to approve mayor's appointment of law officer Lee Van Richardson as municipal prosecutor effective immediately. You've heard the motion. Ready for the questions?
Questions.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Let the record show it was unanimous? No? Okay. Four ayes? Thank you. Motion passed. Item three, this is just for council's information to show sometimes in going forward as well as looking back that sometimes the bills may be paid to one account and we have to adjust it. And this was just something that had piled up and were paid by the city and reimbursed by the EDC because they were EDC legal bills. So again, just for informational only, you have a copy of that check as well. Item four, discuss, consider, and take action on the approval of city council meeting minutes dated October eighth, two thousand eighteen. Is council's pleasure?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Wallace.
I move that we approve the city council meeting minutes dated October eighth, twenty eighteen.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that council approved city council meeting minutes dated October eighth, two thousand eighteen. You've heard the motion. Ready for the questions?
Questions.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Item five, discuss, consider, and take action on the approval of city council meeting minutes dated October twenty-second, two thousand eighteen.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Randall.
I move that we approve the city council meeting minutes dated October twenty-second, twenty eighteen.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that council approved city council meeting minutes dated October twenty-second, two thousand eighteen. You've heard the motion. Ready for the question?
I've been reading this.
Councilman Wallace.
So for item or for new business, future of this item, the meeting for October twenty-second, it says, "C.C. Randall, discuss updates regarding citizens advisory board." That was, if I'm not mistaken, Randall, Councilman Randall said a presentation for the citizens advisory board because I know Ms. Christina from the Prairie Hill subdivision wants to talk about the citizens watch program. And so because it was on the agenda for this meeting, there's no time allocated for her to do that, but there needs to be some time, some avenue for her to talk about what she's been doing in the Prairie Hill subdivision.
And maybe I missed it. I thought I saw that on the last agenda, though.
Well, she wasn't here.
Okay, that's what it was. It was, I just thought it was me. But yeah, we can easily revisit it. That's no problem.
It was two separate.
Oh, two separate.
What we would go is like two meetings.
Oh, okay. But yes, we can definitely add that on to the subsequent agenda. And if you don't mind, we can get that to her so we can cover it. Yes, sir.
And for the council, because I know, and if I'm not mistaken, Councilman Randall, you did say presentations, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so I know Ms. Johnson, maybe to help alleviate, you know, those issues that if, you know, we have new business, even though we may say it in the council meeting, that we may send an email or follow-up just so that the verbage is correct whenever it comes up on the next agenda.
Sounds good. Anything else on that?
No, well, no, but we are missing the other meeting, special meeting. Do we not, do we not need to do that?
Oh, the...
So that we need to...
So the executive session? Okay. Yeah, so we could call upon that. I remember sharing that. Might be mine because there'd be no action, but we like to note it for the record. Okay. So we want to do what we went into the executive session to discuss?
Yes.
So we'll just do and we'll put out no action, mistake? Okay. All those in favor of item five?
Aye.
Oppose have the same right? Motion passed. Item six, discuss and confirm workshop with Trilogy Engineering Services for the proposed wastewater treatment plant scheduled for November thirteenth, tomorrow, six thirty to eight thirty P.M. Councilman Rowland?
Council, I spoke to Mr. Underwood today. He's our current, he's acting in our current capacity as our emergency engineering company, I'm assuming. They are doing a pre, they are scheduled to do a presentation tomorrow here at City Hall from six thirty to eight. This is a time we have blocked off. They'll be going through the presentation on a wastewater treatment facility. The three questions, or the questions, the two questions he had for me that I will respond back to him. He wanted, he's, do we want to talk about the technological part of it, the funding part of it, or...
All of it?
All of it?
All of it.
Okay. And so he is prepared to do that because there's a selection process. Part of the main thing is like, we have to hire an engineering firm and they're going to help us kind of go through this process. And then we have to have a conversation with, after this meeting, I had a conversation with quarter from USW because they should be representing us in some conversations. In some conversations because they are with, if we're talking about a wastewater treatment facility, they'll be directly impacted. And so we want to, the goal and purpose of this workshop is for not only us as council to be briefed and get brought up to speed on things we may not know because we're, none of us are in the wastewater treatment business, but also for the citizens to understand, kind of moving forward, this is a long-term process. We want to identify, we want to have conversations on potential property, potential site locations and those types of things. That necessarily won't be at that meeting, but it helps us to set up where are the next steps. And so I will give them back the same information that we just described.
Sounds good. Yeah, so I see what the information along with the...
This is a town hall, not a, not a special meeting, correct? So we're going to use it.
Correct. And it's already been, it was in a packet. It's already been posted up.
Anything else, Councilman Rowland?
Yes, sir.
And I touched basically why we talked about another project as well. And like you, I told you, there will be some follow-up. It's just really to start that public dialogue to let the public know, you know, we're trying to address those longstanding issues.
One more question. Since they're in the conversation to be the actual city engineer, if we decide, if we decided to move forward this process, they couldn't be the company that, that, or like, we have to go outside of our... Or could there be an IC engineer that they leave that?
They could, well, that would be, right now they're on the temporary.
Right, but they're, I'm saying that if we were to move forward to permanent, right, because they're in the...
Yes. I don't think, I don't think they're firm, but again, that, from the conversation where I heard with him, he wants, you know, they're wanting to do work on projects. That's why we're not necessarily getting into the specifics of a firm. We're just going to outline the process and what a firm would do. And get us to a point to where we then will bring in someone who will help us solely focus on that, that is not going to be on the project.
Just, I see.
Anything else on six? Item seven, discuss workshop with the Texas land office regarding Hurricane Harvey flood, live presentation meetings. Informational purposes only, scheduled for again tomorrow, November thirteenth at two P.M. The representatives from the Texas land office will be coming here and really trying to get all of our residents who are impacted by the flooding, the water, the hurricane, to come out so they can get the information from these folks on all the various programs now that this money from Harvey and other situations are rolling down from the feds and the state, well, from the feds to the state and then on a local level. So they're going to be bringing brochures as well as explaining the programs, answering people's questions and things of that nature. So anyone that you know who had an impact on, you know, any of our last three floods roughly, please let them know because we want to make sure they get whatever information they can for repairs, you know, potential buyouts. They're going to explain that whole process. Yes, sir, Councilman?
So it's a two, it's a two o'clock meeting, so my question is, what about the people who work? You know, most people won't be home before two o'clock. I know we have, I know we have a large population of retired people in our community, but not everybody here. So how are we going to relay the information to the people who can't make a two o'clock meeting?
Well, they'll, they'll be bringing literature and the folks will be able to get back with them. Anyone who like misses the meeting, like to say for work or something, they'll be able to call the Texas land office and we'll have that contact info so that, so that they can get their questions and certainly find out what programs they follow.
Would be anywhere possible, schedule a subsequent meeting down the road, maybe in the evening, on a Saturday?
I'm sure. I know we can probably do another one. Their work schedule, I have to check to see what the evenings are like. This was something that was good for them to get in and out, but again, to start that. So yeah, we can definitely check on that as well. And again, this is just to help put the word out so that people can get this right. Yes?
This is not, no connection with the GLO and the seven hundred thousand dollars, correct?
I believe these are separate funds. As a matter of fact, we're applying separately, if we can, from the county because I found out if the check comes into the county, they have total control and there's certain... Yeah, there's some discomfort with that right now. So we got a confirmation email Thursday. I had to send in that request and they confirmed back on that seven forty-two. These funds, I'm not sure. Now, let's say hypothetically, if it does happen to be on that, then all it's really going to do again is let us better know and understand how to use them and how, you know, they can help the different people based on how they were impacted. But I, I'm not sure. It answered your question.
Subsequent question. We had a presentation last meeting, a reference to the flood zoning that would encompass this, these, this area. Is that going to be on a later, is that going to be talked about in here or is that going to be on a, have we got a request? Remember, we had to request from that company to do that proposal. Is that going to be part of this or is that going to be separate?
Well, they haven't, what they identified prior to them doing a proposal was, he actually went and found an old FEMA map showing it was in a flood plain. So because it's in a flood plain, they weren't exactly sure, you know, what, if anything, could be done. But we'll be skirting back to that because his was to see if we could save that area. And he almost confirmed, nothing you can do. It's hard, it shouldn't have been built there. But we can follow up once we see what's going on with this because, for example, in a meeting that Chief and myself and Judge sat in with the county on some of these, hypothetically, if the area qualifies, say along Ruby Street that was hit the hardest, if it qualifies for a buyout, then that area, assuming that takes place and people have those options on whether or not to accept a buyout, things like that. But if that buyout does truly go forward, that area will be, all housing foundations will be eradicated. It has to disappear.
The reason why I ask that question is that wouldn't this, would, would, wouldn't, are we currently looking to put, to do the study or do, using this type of money from the general land office, hard relief funds, to be able to do the study to then show to the people who live out there? Because I think our specu, our speculation and conversation will not reassure the residents who live in that area that a buyout and all the other things are possible unless we have some facts and some meetings and some things to show why this works. And so I just wanted to make sure that we can connect this study with the monies that we have available and we like make all this, pull it all together. And so I don't know if that's coming next after this meeting.
Well, a lot of that will be addressed by Mr. Vaughn and the other representatives and literature they give us tomorrow. Like you said, that we can make subsequent decisions based on, for example, I had a phone call from a Realtor today and she was asking me about a prospective client buying over there and that sort of thing. And she was asking, I encouraged her be at the meeting tomorrow because again, all of that is up in the air considering it's now confirmed as a flood area. So she'll be here and then they can make those decisions because if it comes to that, it may wind up coming back to council where, you know, we just decide, discuss, and if it's in the best interest of everything, that no more permits can be issued out that way. No more sales can take places because even our emergency responders going in the votes was subjected to some things that could have brought harm to them. Anything else on seven?
Excuse me, can I have one question on seven?
Sure.
When y'all discuss buyout, can you discuss if a buyout does take place, does the buyout funds come to the city and the city acquire that property? What I'm heading to is who becomes the owner of the property if a buyout takes place?
That's, that's why we've now applied to control those funds because it would be city-owned property if we're the recipient of the funds for that area. And of course, we'd be responsible for, you know, clearing it, but it would become city-owned property.
Yes, that's, that's...
But again, we'll be confirming some of that tomorrow.
That was my question. See, who would be, become the owner of that property if a buyout was...
Sure. And then again, that was another concern too because how much property do we want the county owning in the city? Or controlling the check that's supposed to be going to our residents and deciding how much they get, you know? To Councilman Rowland saying, we want to make sure our folks are taken care of by us preferably. Item eight, discuss, consider, and take action on approving Momentum EMS proposal to be designated as the new non-emergency service provider for the city of Prairie View. Councilman Rowland?
I'll turn it over to Councilman Jones.
I had the pleasure to work with Mr. Bailey. Basically, it was as simple as he had, already had a format in a letter that was already approved with the city, Missouri City. With the city of Missouri City. And so at the time, what kind of slowed up the process is the attorneys. So I reached out to Mr. fertile with Olson and Olson, and he responded back to the letter with few questions in which we had asked at our previous city council meeting when Mr. Bailey had came up to speak. He said, "Mr. Jones, the city council has to authorize the service mentioned in the letter. A city authorization is often given. However, the city will need to make sure that the city does not have a contract in place to provide this service." And we have to talking to Chief Porto and things as such, we don't have a contract in place for these services. He's also said, "Another consideration for the council is that the transport, transport company be prohibited from using emergency lights or sirens unless it is an actual emergency," which we also asked at the previous city council meeting, would he be using lights or sirens? And he both said no, so I don't see why there should be any holdup to this process. Then Mr. Bailey now has about thirty-five days to get approval. So I feel as a council, we should go ahead and approve this authorization as well as Mr. Bailey also felt his agreement to hold a town hall about the non-emergency medical services for our citizens Thursday at six P.M.
Can I, did y'all also discuss, whenever you give exclusive rights to a company, basically you should receive some type of franchise?
Two, two things. One, I don't think the letter, so what we, what we looked at is the letter didn't give them exclusivity. We just gave the letter to say, to say that they are a licensed EMS provider and that they could run in the city of Prairie View. This is the opportunity. But I guess, J.J. does bring up a question, is there a fee, permitting fee or something, application fee that EMS service will have to pay, just like, just like the toll?
If you read the way it's listed on item eight, it says to be designated as the new...
Yeah. So we could make a motion to change it?
So when we make a motion to, the motion doesn't have to be listed as it is listed on the agenda for us to accept it. That's correct. We can change it.
We can change it, but Ms...
Yes, you can.
Okay. Two, two, one point, one point real quick. I met with Mr., talked with Mr. Bailey and he did also reach out to, again, we brought this back before council, he reached out to both the fire chief and I think he talked to, to police chief?
Uh, he talked to, uh...
Fire.
Yeah, and he also has a meeting scheduled with the county to even, because the county is also interested in having non-emergency transportation.
So my only thing is to go back to money. Is there a permit fee? Is there a fee, an application fee that we charge? Just like, I don't know if records pay. Records shouldn't have a license, should have, there's a fee. And so I just want to make sure we following the procedures, but do we... He's not asking for that at this moment. Do records pay, chief? Because I know we don't have a yard.
No, they don't pay. What the records do is we put them onto our rotation. But in the case of, of a service like that, you're going, you're going to probably need some, you're going to need some permit first of all. You're going to need an artist or something.
Counselor?
Yeah, I don't know enough about this to give any, any intelligent opinion. What it sounds like to me is that, is that y'all have emergent, non-emergency service providers that provide that services in the community. I haven't read your ordinances, but I assume there's an ordinance that requires them to get permission to do that within your community, which has necessitated this letter, this request.
No, the state requires the provider EMS services to get this letter that then goes back to the state.
Oh, for them to get licensed. Okay. All right, okay.
So we're just kind of a beginning part of the process.
Okay, yeah.
But I think we do need to note that, that once we approve this today, we need to come back. This, this should, this should prevent him from moving forward.
That's correct.
But we should, we do need to talk about a permit, an ordinance, and also a permit figure.
And we can look at those.
Could we not approve this pending your tightening it up, for lack of a better word?
Well, I'm, I'm, I don't have a...
Our ordinance or, or...
Yeah, I don't have a concern based on what I'm hearing. Look, especially what was just said with respect to this was a, this was a request in order for someone to get licensed, they needed a letter of the state. That's not uncommon. That happens all the time in other similar situations. So I don't have a problem with approving that right now, then we can come back and look at any stuff that may need to be done in the future for future activity.
Councilman Randall?
So I don't think there's any objection that this is something that we need to move forward with in the city. All I need to know is what is the correct verbage, so we can put the motion on here.
Motion to authorize Moment, what are they, Momentum EMS Incorporated to operate as a non-emergency service, medical services provider in the city of Prairie View. And someone can just say, "I make that motion." And we can, we'll make sure it's in the record.
I move that we take action to approve Momentum EMS to be designated as a non-emergency service provider in the city of Prairie View.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that council approved Momentum EMS proposal to be designated as a non-emergency service provider in, in the city of Prairie View. You've heard the motion. Ready for the questions?
Questions.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose have the same right? Eyes have it.
The other pieces are we going? Since I have been, then Councilmember Rowland have been in contact with Mr. Bailey and he's been quite receptive, I'm sure, after he returned back from the state that we will sit down with our attorney and think of that such a, ordinance.
Item nine, discuss community benefits agreements. And Councilman Wallace, I think you said you'd like to...
Yeah, so I sent everybody an email stating the reason why I want to move it because it's going to be a group of community development students that are going to explain it further. And now that we have an attorney, we, I want us to talk about a community benefits agreement just probably next week, since you just got into, since you just got into the position that we can all be kind of in agreement on what community benefit agreements is, how we can use it to further progress the city.
So you want to carry it over to the December tenth meeting because we don't have a November one?
Yes, whatever.
Okay, next meeting.
The December tenth?
Yeah.
All right, yeah.
Okay. Councilman?
I move to retable item nine to the November, to the December tenth meeting.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that item nine, discuss community benefit agreements, be tabled to the December tenth meeting. Heard the motion. Ready for the questions?
Questions.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Item ten, discuss, discuss and take action in regards to structure of city council meetings. Councilman Randall?
All right, so last couple of meetings we've had, news conversation, we made changes about how we can expedite the process of how we can do meetings, you know, from a financial standpoint and just from a, from a organizational standpoint. So this, this item is just to open the conversation about different things that we could do. One, one big thing that I think we could do is a consent agenda. I think as we create a consent agenda, we've had it before to where things like the minutes and, you know...
and, you know, things that are standard, we can just pass in one motion, right? And everybody knows the way a consent agenda works, if there's an issue with any item within that consent agenda, we can vote to take it out and we, we can discuss that. I think, uh, I think that's one step we can do. Um, we had also talked about, for one, either going back to one meeting a month or structuring our two meetings a month where one meeting is informational meeting and the next meeting is action meeting. I don't know how the council feels about that, but that's another option. Um, and I think we, we just, the motion just passed to where we, you know, where the talk time has been adjusted. So I think, I think this, this is our opportunity for us to throw different ideas out there and figure out how we can, uh, expedite our meetings and, and be able to be more efficient when we meet. So, uh, it's open for discussion to, to talk about, you know, anybody having other ideas.
The first question I have, uh, I know you said it before, that the, the initial ideology of having two meetings was first informational, uh, the second one to take action. First, I just want to ask, what was the efficiency of that and how that really, I was, did that ever really come to play?
We never did it, we never did it. So from the time, so we were having one meeting a month and we were in here till ten, eleven, twelve o'clock at night every, every, every month, you know, super long agenda. So we're like, hey, let's meet twice a month to shorten the meetings. But what ended up happening is we had two agendas on, two agendas that were equally as long. So it, it never, it never materialized to, to the purposes intended to. So it was just like, instead of one long meeting a month, we started having two of them each year.
Well, I'd, I'd like to, to throw something out there because, um, like Councilman Randall, I think we all agree with that. But take a look at what just happened. You know, we, we came out of executive session a little while ago and things have just been moving. If we, if we stayed, if we stayed our point, I mean, there's, there's going to be some opportunities for discussion, but still, I, I think if, if we understand that our goal here isn't to convince each other, it's to state our point and everybody states their point and you vote it up or down. And that just tends to move, but the, the, the one thing that, um, I read when this, this came up in Robert's Rules of Order is they suggest you put a motion on the floor, everybody state their piece, and then somebody called for the questions, it's voted on and we move. See, we've been waiting, going through a lot of discussion, and if we have a motion on the floor and somebody called for the questions because maybe, you know, one of us is repeating ourselves, then it's going to move. So that's another thing to help focus the discussion.
I think that, you know, is also, that's a good idea as well, but I think in order for that to take place, what would have to happen is anybody who requests not to be put on the agenda needs to sit in subsequent information.